President Lizer here for this October 20th Town Hall update. So let's get started real quick. Our President Jonathan Nez is traveling out to the Four Corners area to do some food distributions. And he's looking for a good site in which to conduct his portion. As you know, he gives us timely updates and vital information along with our other cabinet level here. But without further ado, open up in prayer and I will give a short report. And then if need be, pass it on to JT Willie. And we'll get a report on the CARES Relief Fund and the updates on the artisan and business relief. And he's got some great data. And you know, one of the things that we didn't really, maybe we did, maybe JT had a plan all along, but to get this pertinent data that we're able to extrapolate and look at. And it's data we've never had before. So even now in this CARES, in the Corona pandemic, the data for the Navajo Nation Department Economic Belma is being enhanced. So I'm sure he'll get into that. And these are new numbers, needed numbers. It'll help us advocate for future meetings with our congressional delegation and federal family and also the state. And we're working on a myriad of different things to enhance the Navajo Nation becoming more business friendly. So at that, let's go open up in prayer as we always do. "A'kheh, Deen, God, we thank you, Lord, for another day of life. We thank you that we can come to you, Lord, that your tender mercies are made new every morning. Lord, that you restore every morning for those of us who understand that principle, Lord, that you, Father, can just be accessed, Lord, your blessings can be accessed. And Father, all your promises are yes and amen. Father, I pray that you raise up a contingent of those of us, Lord, who feel led and believe and have faith, Lord, that you can do what you say you can do. And as we pray, prayers for the land, Lord, Father, for healing to come to our people. Lord, may you just glorify yourself and your son, Jesus, Lord. We pray, Father, that many are healed, that many are aided and strengthened, Lord, Father, and that peace would come upon their homes, Lord, those that are mourning. We've lost 574 of our dear brothers and sisters. So Lord, we ask a special blessing on those families, Lord, that you would just strengthen them, gird them up, Lord, Father, but let them continue this race, Father. Lord, as healing comes to the land, we pray, Father, that many are will be blessed in this time. The struggle, Lord, Father, any struggle is meant to bring good to us, Lord. What the enemy use for evil, Father, you use it for good. And so let us be strengthened and encouraged by that. But we give you the time, Father, that the data and the information that's given out, may many use it. May many run with it, Father, and be the better for it and stronger for it. Lord, we pray for your wisdom, Lord, in which to roll and flow in this meeting, Lord. We pray for President as he's on travel, Lord, out there, Lord, to bless those that are coming, Lord, Father, for supplies. We pray, Father, Lord, that those supplies go to where it's intended, Lord, and encourages, Lord, those that are struggling, Father. As we aid our people, Father God, you give seed to the sower. So we thank you again, ask you to guide this meeting, Lord. Let the people be blessed again with the information and use it for the knowledge. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen. So this morning, October 20th, we do have this Town Hall where we give updates. And we'll have another one scheduled on another couple of days out Thursday, usually at 6:00 PM. So I see Mr. President there. Are you able to speak more readily, sir? All right, we got a thumbs up here. So just blessings upon our presidency. See, prayer works. We got to a good spot. Yeah, anyway, praise Lord. So anyway, ladies and gentlemen, the President of the Navajo Nation, Jonathan Nez.
A'kheh la, Vice President Shana. Da in la'gi do, behein tsegi, ba'keh ni'tzen. Aro, aree, da nichin'na'ligi shik iro shunne. Kudo i Jonathan Nez an na nichilne. A'isin shlon t'kat neesa, ni e basis chin do, t'kori chini da shichiro, t'kat chini da shunne le. Aro, nle, ninahnizar ho'li'ego, e nichil oluwalcho, e di nle' Washington de, besu chudet ane. E ch'ni'an do, di ixi, betlin dal, inigida, e nde'ni, dene'bi ke'ya p'ka'oh. So e kuni'oluwalto. Ala, l'atsad akunne, 11:00 AM go, e ad, e xi'an dak'hi do lel, do, nachabiga'ha. Aro, l'ana'ado, e ya upper fruitland do lel la. Aro, ala ol'kilo, e sarak an, nak'i ol'kilo, e San Juan, Chapford do lel, an nachabiga'ha. Aare, da nichin'na'ligi do, ben'a'go ke'at'oh, inigia, nacha'hi do'kha'to, a'isin e ya ch'ni'an do. A'ixi, da na'da ni'tzen, inig'i xi, e betlin dal, inig'i e, e nde'ni'no lek'ek'ero shunne. So a'kui'je ben'dahuilne, do, ad'mona'tle'ho, nak'i ch'indanne shunne do, di ch'indanne shunne. Di dikus n'tchaga'gi, di nachailni'ia dikus, e ban'dahuilne. Ak'oh, o e ixi ben, nichil pe'ozon do lel. Aro, nichina'nish, edehl, inigido, kudo, nchalch'ne a'jin dal, nishigia. Tsul'au dan lenigi, zel'indan lenigi, aro, nle'tcha'na'znale hadastzo go a'jin dal, nishig'i. Ben'a'nish edehl, inig'i ban'dahuilne, ad'mona'tle'ho. Aro, di do, l'adaha'ni'ya, ha'ilah beni'na'ba'na'halne. Di dikui'lanelt, e ya bedat'ol'na'agi do, nichit'adat'jut'ene gi'jo. Jo di, beni'na'agi jo, hanne', nichil pe'da haz'no. E kota, e ya, di k'un'na'chnigi, nachi'koda di'lni'lo'te. Jo hanne'at'e, do na'nthinat'e, di e bi'tu'n di'k'ach, e ndeshni. Ak'onda l'aa'aita, nichina'nthin. Hal'no' do, l'kin'na'ntine ben'da'nohthin di'che, e ba'keh ni'tzen. Kudo, adah'ni'ya. Ke'ot ni'ston, nichina'nthin, ninizar. Oyo, nachi'k'on nich'ada'no'le ya'da'hthe. Ashit'ao, e ya k'un, di na'chnigi bi'tu di'k'ach, nichin'ichina'nthin, be, bi'tu di'k'ach'oto. Dene'na'as'ne inigia, di k'un ban'dahuilne'ha, l'aa. Nichi'ke'ni'chedne, a'ni ndak'he'gi do da'is'za, nacha'ilah beni'na'win'zen xi. Jo di, do xi, dene'ke'chi ya'de'ilthe'odat'ze beni'na', jo hanne', do na'ntine. Do b'lna'ni'thin da di ch'illa, k'un ke'dahuit'ene gi. E beni'na, e kudo, nichi'ch'ero, nichi'masan do, nichina'tani dan lenne. E bena'ntine, jo e ben, nichi'zilo'deni, k'ach di'chen shik'ero shunne. Nichi'joba'in shik'ek'ena'cha'ha dan ni'tzeno, odadi'ne, e beni'na, shik'ero shunne. Di na'chnigi, oyo yak'otsa, yak'oh ni'chn'te, dene'adeske. Beni'na'g'ishi, bel'agana ke'dah'at'ena go'ya, nichin'a'go, dene'bi ke'ya ben'a'go. Bel'agana bi'ke'ya go, e ya, ad'na'chnigi, ka' nichil yahan'a na'chni, dene'bi ke'ya p'ka'je. Dedeske ndeshni, k'je hos'do'je do, k'je do yot'ko h'hotz'oj, so'le h'hotz'oj. E a'je, a'ye'go dedeske, shklatin h'hotz'ogo ah'oto, ak'onda nichi'e a'sho. Kudo ben'da'ni'thin go'go, e ya, a, a dol'la, do, do e'la'ada. K'un, nichi'ke'ni'chedne, bedat'ol'na'agi. So di ch'inge, di ch'inge, e ya, k'un'dask'aga'ya. L'asi e ya, nichi'chin'ko'ne, hot'a tes'nda nichi'di'iliya. Ala Nezna'tin do ba'has'tchan tin, no. Ala Nezna'tin do ba'has'tchan ts'ad'hat'amil ya'jo do ba'has'tchan Nezna'tin do ba'ansepi. Sebitin do ba'has'tchan enelt'ao. Hot'a e k'un ndask'ra do, ahandi tes'da bedilne. Aro, aro k'un bedat'ol'na'agi, di ch'inge ya'ailni'ya da nle'mei, April, eh, da donle'. Adana'je, edehl'ta'agi do, na'nish, da'ill'agi. Kudo, hanne', nichi'ke'ka'ill'agi, adane. Nezna'damil ya'je, Nezna'damil ya'je, nahast'e Nezna'tin do ba'has'tchan tin do ba'nahast'e. Enelt'ao, e k'un deisk'aga'ya, e ya, di dikus n'tchaga'gi, nahast'e it's'adah. E bedahal'no' do bedat'ol'na'. Ak'ola e yi'ch'dask'ha'ya, e ro ban'dahuilne. Bi'tu'sdo'gal'oto, bedu'ek'ol'na'ao. E ixi e kudo'tso'dez'en, bedu'ne'ite'eg'ao. K'un, nchalch'ne, li'ke'edan lenigi, yemasan, yech'eg'inala bedat'ol'na'yi'ch'dask'ha. Yi'ch'dask'ha'eg'ya, e ya, sepi'damil ya'je. Do ba'atra Nezna'tin, do ba'nahast'e tin, do ba'has'tchan, enelt'ao, e k'un ya'te'andas'ling. Adana e ya na'tzos, inch'cha'ao da'ne'ya. Bi'tu di, bi'tu di'ago, ahandi k'ot'sisi gi, at'ixi e bedad'ni'ti. Ga'no' hot'a sa na'tzos nzel'indan lenigi. Jo di, k'ote'zol'ya, che'titsi'le. Nahast'ok'wixin'dez'edoo, ahandi e kota, ah'oto e'le'ha, no'da, ya'ya'da'hthe. K'wixi l'aa bi'tu'das', bi'tu'das'ok'he'gi, nichil pe'da haz'no. L'aa'edane, a nak'i damo' do leli, nachi'koda ni'ch'ande. Al'aj, kin'lag'aid na'tani das'ot'agi, e hot'a yalhthe'la'ya. Ak'onda, l'aa'ya ahandi bi'tsisi bi'tu'n ndahas'ti, yi'ch'dask'ha'eg'ya. E beni'na, ad'adah'hol'yan da di, no' k'un sa'di, nichi'ke'ero shunne. Aro, di ch'inge e ya, ash'la'Nezna'tin. Do ba'atsos'etin, do ba'tin, enelt'ao, e k'un, k'un ichi'ke'ni'chedne. Nichi'bi'ts'ado, bel'gal, beni'indas'ti, it's'adat'jut'ene. E kota, e ya, k'un batso'di'ls'zen ni'ch'eni'chedne. Ba'ach'ha'ni'tzen do, a'je do, li'ke'edan lenigi bi'te'ro ben'adast'li. E ixi do batso'di'ls'zen do lel, shik'ero shunne. Ha'dainol'ne, ha'ilah ol'ya, ha'dainol'ne, bal'sarak kes. A'je, a'dene'ke'che, yilpe'da haz'no inig'i. Ha'dainol'ne, jo k'ad, di ch'inge, di bi'tu di'k'ach. Do, nichi'zilo'te, ala ni'tzeno, nichin'ax'ola, ndeshni. Kudo e ya'k'of, le'thi'p'aho, ban'da'ini. Tsul'ab'je hot'esh'ne, da di, no, jo, tsul'au do, oh'hiyuda ya, kundi'ne'bi ke'ya p'ka'oh, nichil pe'da haz'no, do la'adha. E ben nach'ek. Kudo xi, bedah'ani'ls'no, thi'p'aho ban'da'ini'ha. Ash'one'xi ya'jes'ewe, aro k'un di na'chnigi bi'ye. N'chanda'ndahan'eh, tab'do'ne. Aro, nichi'ke'ro, nichi'dene do, bi'tu ya'da'hthe, ndadi'ni. Kudo, chi'ya'jes'ewe, aro cha'na'na'ha. L'asi e to'ad'bel'agana bi'ke'ya den'dal'nish, do da'ol'tcha. N'desh, da, jo k'ade, Thanksgiving je'oh'od'ji'el, do, Christmas je'oh'od'ji'el. Da di tin'chi'adha'ne. Da di, din chin dahna, jo, ze, ba, ten, shkei do shunne. Aro, ze, ba, le, do, e beni na, di nahlnigi, e koon, di ne bi kei apaka, ya, nahlni. Baso, ti, la xin, Lego, nichi ke, nichidne, klo, de ke dahati, do, a, indal, nish. Nde, shta, chmasan, xi, chey, xi, shenale, baka, deswol, da ne. Nacha, hot, i, hot, e, nde, aro, la, ndahtle, da di ne. Xi, masan, xi, chey, shenale, ches, biti, kude, shli, shda, no, inig, oh, nacha, at, eh, nde. Aro, ye, dikowalche, biti, ya dahli, aro, la, ndahtle, da di ne. Di mesk, do, at, eh, gi, do, chodal, eh, a, ha, ganhas, a, inda, hot a, chodal, eh. Nichilpe ozin, xinla, ta, ta, go ya, ta, ita, go, di mesk, chode, in, de. Jo, ta, ita, go, e aita, do, chode, in, de, aro, da, ita, a, tsku, ta, ta, la, hot a. A, niltsku, hot a, di ro, chode, in, go, ta, ita, go, at, eh, e xin, heida, beha, hallo, go. Di nahlnigi, koon, biti, beda dolna, hot, eh. E ro ban tsada, kes, yike, no, shini, jo, ba inshke, ndeshno, ndeshne, jo, ka, di kwixin, desse. Cebi, da, zeh, ndesse, a di nahlnigi, och, yu, koon, ashla, din, haozoo, go, nichi, bela, ashla, i. Ada chedene, do, di, kodo, hinan nish edel, inig, koon, ghalchin, yike, edan lenigi. Di na nish edel, e, a, kwijje, nacha, ya dahli, do, nacha, ndal, nish, nacha, nda, bah, ndeshni. Aro, di do, nichi, chta, ndakhi, masan, chi, nal, nahlni. E beni na, e kodo, nacha, alchin, biti, ya dahli, telephone, da, biti, da, 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 do, shunne. Aro, aro, kwe, ha, gande, a, ndakhi, chir, nichi, akon, kodo, la, e, o, chir, xin. Kuje, ade, do, lili, biti, kodo, lili, ye masan, ye chey, inala, aro, a, kodha, do lel. Aro, na, a, xi, do lel, aro, xin ke dahat, inig, aro, ulche, ndakhi, do, beha, zenda. La e ayat, eh, koon, ndakhi, akon de, dikos ntschaga, be, hallo, do, yichu ndakhi, do, beha, zenda. E beni na, deshne, hadaino, shunne, la xin, e be, ba, che, tekhi. Di koon, nacha, alchin, do, da ne ya, ya da, benne, la, ndahtle, eh, do, bena che. Akon de, a, ze, baz, ne, go, go, nda, la, ndeitle, do lel. La e dahna ya, ze, baz, baz, le, on, de, do, i, cha, do, tsada, da, 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 no, da, ya da. E xin, nichilpe ozin, do, nichin, xasula. Jo, koon, a, a, la, nahlni, hot, eh, di, di dikos, a, a, dikos, ah, inigida. Aro, e do, a, bena che, da, dahliya, a, na, cha, na, cha, kodo, nacha, na, tsia, flu, influenza, edel, inig. E do, nachabiga, da nosano, nacha, at, eh, da di chen, di, dikosigida, dikos ntschaga, a, la. Hot dolna, go go, bah, zed, danichido, ne, nzel indan lenigi. So, e hot, a, hanne, nichi, akonana, shla, do lel. Aro, di chinda, shunne, xi, e ya, hanne, nichi, akonade, ne, do lel. Aro, di koon, beso, biti, a, di ayat, di, yike, nichidne, biti, nda, zegi, di nahlnigi, beni nagi. E, na tsos, hadaliya, nichi, hada, tohle, xin, do lel, kodo, xin, e ya, a. Ye masan, ye, ye masan, ye chey, inala, nahast, da slin, gi. Nchalchana, ajin dal, nishigi, Senior Citizen Center, e ro, biti, edel, a, do lel. Ne xin, na tsos, yige, jo, do, de, ile, do lel, ka, da, tohle, xin, danichidne, edo lel. So, e nichilpe ozin, do lel, social service, da, hot, la, la xin, le, to, da, ari, xinla, yike, nichidne, ke dahat. Biti, nda hazti, e do, ba, at, eh, do lel, akon de. Di, din do, ba, nahast, edin, milso, nel, a, de beso, ba, shda, ni, nel. Kuje, ben, edel, nish, eh, tsen, tsh, pe, tsh, chi, edo, tchudha, naska, do, lili. Di, bichin, jo, balle, telephone, da, chodal, inig, e, di, hadas, agin, le, zelpakado, berada. Antena, hadas, a, inig, e do, la, odado, lili, la, di, no. Akon de, di, December, go ne, nishje, tsokonne, tchadin, go ne, e be, a, do lel, e beni na. E koon, yindal, nish, a, tskin, go. Di, nishje, tsosse, go ne, di, aro, la, beso, chodas, in, go ya, di, beso, chi, da, naska, do, lili. Tchudha, naska, do, lili, yigi, e, kuje, asa, di, sten, do, nchnana, e, kodha, e, nichi ke, nichidne, biti, kodo, lili. Da, no, hot a, baz, a, ni, nichi, be, shba, a, ni, elada, slin, do, nichi, kha, ilya, kodo, shuna, Vice President, Mayor, Lizer. So, e xin, ba dakwilne, do lel, a di jinje, e ya, di, application, di, inig, na tsos, hada, tohle, ha, inig. E be, la, slin, kechi, e ya, Lego, a, nacha, ndal, nish, ki, tchadha, dakha, do lel, nacha, hada, da, do lel. Akon de, do, e la, la, ndeitle, do lel, jo, di, nahlnigi, beni na. So, e, o, nichilpe ozin, do lel, shkei do shunne. Ke, la, a, xi, konsa, de, de, kechi, yiche, hasi, do lel.
You know, we just wanted to transition to English, just to give an update. I failed to mention Navajo, where I'm at. We are at the summit, the mountains are behind us, on our way to food distribution, Nina Nazad. And that's at eleven o'clock, Upper Fruitland at twelve, Seracan at one, and San Juan Chapter at two. And that's where we'll be at today, and it's close to eleven, nine minutes, they'll be starting shortly. The numbers, total tests that have been given, it's over fifty percent of our total population that live on the Navajo Nation that has been tested. And that's one hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-six people. Of those, ten thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine have tested positive for COVID nineteen. And that's the start from April to yesterday, this is a report. But there are recoveries, as you all know, seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-six people have recovered. And I was saying this in Navajo as well, is that, you know, people think, and you hear this, even from our US president, saying, well, two weeks, I'm back to normal, I'm ready to go. But if you really talk to some of our people out there that have come down with the virus, they say there is some long-term effects. With the lungs, with the heart, I was reading about it last night, you know, in, in a runner's magazine, see, these are healthy people. That got the virus, but they, for two, three months after their virus, their heart are breathing, they still have a cough. Their heart beats quicker, they may have rashes, things like that, you know, there's still long-term effects. People think, you get the virus, and fourteen days later, that's it, you're healed, and you're recovered, and you're okay. But if you start investigating it a little more, there's some long-term effects of COVID nineteen. And I say that because, you know, we're, we're letting down a little bit. We are, maybe it's because we saw some all-time lows since the start of the pandemic, you know, we had. Single digits, even one day with zero cases, and now, for the past few days, five days, except for yesterday, yesterday. We had fourteen cases, but before that, the past five, six days, we were in the thirties, in the forties, in the fifties. And I appreciate the healthcare facilities, there's doctors, there're nurses, and there're staff. The contact tracers that are there because they isolate them, so it doesn't spread. These are things that we've learned since COVID came here, onto the Navajo Nation. So, this is the new normal for all of us. This virus will not go away until there's a vaccine. And vaccines are being studied, and, and there's trials happening. Dr. Anthony Fauci said that there might not even be a vaccine available until April of twenty twenty-one, next year. So, this is the future, right now, ladies and gentlemen, there's gonna be outbreaks here and there. And it's up to us to minimize those outbreak, outbreaks, and to minimize the spread. And that's following the public health orders that have been in place. You know, and, and I, I know everybody is out there watching people and saying that, oh, everybody is not listening, not everybody. As I go through these food and supply distribution, over eighty percent, people are saying they're staying home. It's just the, the ones that don't listen gets all the attention, and if you're listening, I'm talking to you. We need you to follow on these public health orders. So that we don't spread it within our families. Contact tracers have said, these outbreaks are happening at social gatherings, family gatherings. And as you know, family gatherings, we tend to eat, and when we eat, we take these masks off, and we eat at the same time. So even though we're wearing our mask in the, in a family gatherings, we tend to take it off when we eat. And just imagine how quick a virus can spread when you take your mask off during a family gathering. And that's happening all over, people who are working, or living, or visiting, that go off the Navajo Nation, catch the virus, they might not even know it. And they come back onto the Navajo Nation, and they go to a gathering, and boom, that's where these outbreaks are, and that's where all these doctors and nurses and. Contact tracers have to do a lot of work to isolate. Let's give our contact tracers some support by following through on these public health measures. You know, and many of us are out there on the front lines, our police officers, you know, our leaders, you know. We don't have to be out here supporting our people, but I think it brings comfort to the citizens out there to know that their president, their vice president, or their council delegate. Is out there, or the chapter official is out there in the community, helping out their citizens. Because this is a trying time for all of us, you can't just sit in an office, you just can't sit, especially if you're a leader, you just can't isolate yourself. You know, I love you all, I love the people here on Navajo Nation, and many, and all our public servants out there want you all to be safe. And we, and they put their own health on the line on a daily basis. And so those of you that may feel me stepping on your toes, you know, I hope you take this in. This is the future, especially when Thanksgiving and Christmas is coming up now, we're gonna all wanna come together. We're gonna all wanna come together, but in order to keep our people safe, we need just to sacrifice some time. Until there's a vaccine, we're all hopeful that we'll go back to some normal in the future. But until then, we have to continue to wear our masks, social distancing, you know, we have over. Five hundred and seventy-four of our Navajo people who've lost their lives to COVID nineteen. Our elders, sixty percent of those, five seventy-four, sixty percent, are over sixty years old or, or over. We need to protect them, and many of you, super majority of you, are listening to the public health orders, and we need your help. Family members out there, talk to your fam, families, talk to your younger generation. It's the people that just can't sit still that are out there, visiting the cities. Or those that are off the Navajo Nation, wanna come home and help your grandma, we, we, we understand that, you can do that. You can take the wood home, you could take the supplies home, and leave it, and stay. And you could do your job, don't just use it as an excuse, you know, to come home, if you're truly wanting to help your family, then do it. But do it in a safe manner, you know, during these lockdowns, we said farming and livestock, ranchers, you, you can go out. And then we also said woodhawling. To get those necessities, to get prepared for winter, it's getting cold again. And when we get into the winter season, everybody's gonna be indoors. We don't have the privilege during the winter to come out and get fresh air, as, in long periods of time. Everybody's indoors, the same air circulating within the home or the office. And so it's very important that we keep ourselves here on Navajo, and try to keep everybody off Navajo until we get a vaccine. I know a, people are gonna get offended by that, especially those Navajo people that wanna come back home. I'm just saying that you put the lives of people, Navajo people. By not adhering to the public health order here on the Navajo Nation. And we want our Navajo people, especially our most vulnerable population, our elders, to be safe. And I plead with you that we do that, work together to keep this virus off our nation. You know, and we're gonna be changing out some of the billboards throughout the Navajo Nation as well, and we'll be doing some messaging work. We're gonna get some people who have gone through COVID, that wanna share their experience, so you understand what people go through. And maybe when we all hear that, we would take it a little bit more seriously. Those that don't take it serious, again, eighty percent, I'd say, about Navajo people, have obeyed the public health order. And I, I wanna say thank you, thank you, thank you so much for the hard work that you do. And for others, we can be encouraged and inspired to do better. Let it be today, let us refocus, those of you that I might step toes on, that's just temporary, you know. Let us refocus and rededicate ourselves now, when we're going through another spike here on the Navajo Nation, to do better, to protect our people, let's be warriors, let's wear our masks, let's wear our armors. That's what it's all about, mask is an armor, PP is our armor. Our weapons are what we do to help each other, to defend, you know, from this virus. And that's the teaching that we get, the teaching that has been handed down from one generation to the next. Just imagine, back in the day, they went through viruses too. They went through tuberculosis, leaders who came together, people were probably doing the same thing. But it was up to the citizens to rise up and help each other be accountable, and to keep everybody safe. So, we'll, we'll be coming back together to give you a more report on Thursday. About the CARES Act Fund, the CARES Act Fund, the application has been approved, mobilizing to get to our elders, our most vulnerable population, to fill out. The applications, and we're just waiting on the controller. the applications. And we're just waiting on the controller, budget, finance, and Hess already. Controller, as you heard last town hall on Friday. She says yes, she says no, based on the Treasury Guidelines. And it's got to be focused on the pandemic and how that pandemic plays hardship on our people. And there is many people, not just here on Navajo, but off the Navajo Nation that have been hit hard by this pandemic. And I say this respectfully too, those of us, those of us that are are well off, if you want to call it that, that have been working, that have been, that are okay. Let's allow those that got hit hard to apply for these funds. It's not per capita, it's based on hardship. And I know that there are people on our nation and throughout the world that are Navajo that have been hit hard, very hard. And let's, let's make sure that we assist them. We got power line, electric tower, cell towers going up, broadband towers going up right now. And if some of those projects are not complete by the end of November, it'll go back into the hardship fund. Right now, we're close to about half of the dollars being expended for these projects. And these are permanent projects. Those of you that are living off the Navajo Nation, this is an improvement to our nation. Or any with this pandemic or any future pandemic that hits us. Let's pray that permanent improvement can happen with these monies. Waterline, electricity, towers going up throughout our nation. Because eventually, many of us, many of you that are living on the Navajo Nation, one day will want to come home. And we don't want to hear still the same way. We want to do some improvements. Here's an opportunity to do that. We pray for you, we love you all, we thank you for everything that our first responders are doing. I want to say thank you to the Navajo Nation Council, the Twenty-Fourth Navajo Nation Council. I did a report yesterday to the Council, including the Vice President for our Navajo Nation State, State of the Navajo Nation address. And we had to sit down and we addressed some of the questions that they have had. And we're going to move forward on improving the quality of life for our Navajo people. So take care of yourself. Overcome, overcome these challenges. And we'll all overcome this challenge as a Navajo people. So thank you so much. Again, N'Nahna Zad, that's where we're headed. Eleven, Upper Fruitland at twelve, Tzadakon at one, San Juan Chapter at two for the food and supply distribution. God bless you and God bless our great Navajo Nation. I'm going to turn the time back over to the Vice President of our great Navajo Nation, Vice President Lizer. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. President. We appreciate your leadership. One just has to be willing to hold on to our president's coattails. And so many of our staff and our cabinet do. And so they're out there. So if you're in that area, N'Nahna Zad here coming up shortly. And Sadya Khan and some of the other chapters of the Fruitland, if you're there, please do get to these places and get a food box, get some cleaning supplies, some PPEs. Those are good, those are needed here. And so please, if you have that need to get out there, and those of us who are, as President says, have the money, you know, let's save the supplies for those that really need it. And so let's continue to work hard, be vigilant here. Just want to share a little bit of my heart with you this morning. You know, again, we have J.T. Willie lined up here to give some economic development updates here real soon. But today being October twentieth, two thousand twenty twenty, so it looks pretty strange on my calendar right here. I wrote it down, October twentieth, twenty twenty. Wow. Today, thirty years ago, my wife and I, Dottie, the Second Lady of the Navajo Nation. We got married in a church in Scottsdale, Arizona, First Southern Baptist Church there on Scottsdale Road. Some of you know about it. Some of you of our people drive by that church every day going to work, living your lives out there. So yeah, thirty years ago today, Dottie and I tied the knot and, you know, we've been through a lot, we've, you know, did a lot, seen a lot. And so praise the Lord. I just want to encourage those of you out there, maybe this pandemic's got you stressed out. Maybe this pandemic's got you wondering, you know, how things are going to be, what the future looks like. And so just know that, you know, with the Lord in our hearts and our minds, that we can get through anything. And so certainly, I do want to do that. But you know, one of the things about being married for thirty years is, is I think just being thankful, being grateful. And just those two characters, having that type of character really leads and plants a lot of good seeds for you. And so I'm thankful for our former pastor over there many years ago, Pastor Thomas Hodge, who I think now lives in Florida. Probably retired now, but you know, the premarital counseling that he offered us and it's great, you know, we were able to kind of look at what could be the landmines in our marriage and we, you know, were able to see those and to pray through them, over them, around them, all those things. And so premarital counseling really, really does work. You know, there was commitment behind that all as well. I don't know. Yeah, I guess so. You know, when you do ask somebody to marry you, you envision a lifetime with them. And, you know, that's where that commitment comes from, because there will be hardship, guarantee that there will be hardship. But there'll be blessings as well. And so with Dottie and I, in thirty years, have three wonderful children. Of course, they're adult children now. Twenty-seven, twenty-six, and twenty years old. So we've been blessed and, you know, lived our lives like that. We're blessed and highly favored. People see you on the street, hey, how's it going? Hey, I'm blessed and highly favored. You speak it into existence and, you know, it's just a good principle. So, you know, you leave a legacy, right? Your children always watch you grow up and they become, you know, I guess you teach them and then they become motivated to be like their parents in a lot of ways. So I myself lived my young adult life, my father, even when I wasn't found faithful, even when I wasn't, you know, the best I could be. He always said, always a prayer, son, always a prayer. And so now my kids tell me that. Dad, always a prayer. So you leave a legacy in your family. Ah, you leave an inheritance for your children's children, you know, that's a great blessing. It's a great principle in which to live, you know, so it's not about us and our generation, all the toys, what can we have, right? Well, you're going to leave an inheritance for your children and your children's children. And so that's a, it's a great plan to have and keep. So you leave a legacy in that. Little bit of scripture here, "A three-stranded cord is not easily broken." You know, those of you who have to understand that, you know, a three-stranded cord, one strand can easily be broken, right? It said, it said like this in the Bible, "Though one may be overpowered by another, two can withstand him. And a three-full cord is not easily broken." This kind of referencing about God and you and your spouse, right? And so a three-stranded cord is not easily broken. Sometimes we go into relationships without our Creator and two strands, right? And so kind of easy to break. So three strands, not easily broken. But, you know, our President and I, we believe in the power of prayer. And, you know, my new, my new friend, I just met him this weekend. Remember, I said I live my life like I haven't met my best friend yet? Met a powerful man in God this weekend. And he says, "We have to maintain the atmosphere." Okay, how do you do that? Through prayer, you tie him on your knees, through prayer and fasting, you maintain your atmosphere. "From fake to faith," he says. "From glory to glory," he says. "From power to more power," he says. And, you know, it's with that faith that our President and I, First and Second Lady, we say, "Lord, heal our people. Heal our people all across the land." So as we pray and as you join us in praying for the land, we know that our God is faithful, He'll answer, He'll heal the land, He'll rid this coronavirus from us and those families, those dear, dear families who we've lost, you know, we pray for them in strength. So what the enemy has meant for evil, right? Our God, turn it around, use it for good. And so we expect a lot of good things to come out of this loss. In some ways, it's a sacrifice. And for those of you who know scripture, you know, as maybe hard right now, difficult it is to see this, those that are, you know, gone, they're not forgotten, but those that have left us perhaps spiritually are a seed, are a seed for a future blessing, right? And so those are just some illustrations and some, I guess, principles that our Heavenly Father's Kingdom and how He sets His kingdom and how He runs it. And so everything by order. So let me change gears here real quick and we're going to talk. I hope I don't steal any of J.T. Willie, who will be following me up next here. I hope we don't steal any of his thunder. I want to just highlight, President, and yesterday, we spoke in the opening session of the Fall Session of the Navajo Nation Council. And we alluded to, President alluded to putting me as the front man or as the Chairman of the Economic Recovery Work Group. We've been meeting, I think, just picked up steam this last month. Started having our first meetings on what coming out of this pandemic looks like, you know, opening businesses and whatnot. And so we always believe we can open up and open up safely, recover safely. Ours is an economy that needs to get bolstered, needs to get started. A lot of our businesses are moving away to areas that are open already. And we get it, right? Money flows through the path of least resistance. It's kind of like electricity. And so some opportunities that we are working on right now are of the big splash type, big splash type still. You know, I guess held close, held tightly until an announcement can be made. But our Nez Lizer administration, we only had eleven months in which to work to bring the changes and the enhancements that the people were expecting. You know, from a new administration, only eleven months. And then this pandemic hit, COVID-19 hit. And it was unforgiving, it was unrelenting. And so for the next eight months, we've been on pause. Just press pause and that's it. And, you know, it's like nothing, nothing's really moving forward. And so, so in this pause, we have many opportunities that have come to our attention. While all the eyes of the world were on Navajo, if you remember back in June, July, August. We have seen many of these opportunities land in our lap, so to speak. And, you know, we are working on many of those proposals and some of them have significance, especially in this time, this pandemic time. Those of you who know, another meaning of crisis is opportunity. And certainly, we are looking at those opportunities right now. We continue to have discussions with the White House. Today, we'll convene in a call and we'll discuss many opportunities for Indian country. Many opportunities. I've talked about establishing our own Narbona Growth Fund here. You know, when our leaders say, "Let's streamline the way we do business, let's streamline the way we do things here on Navajo, let's cut the red tape. Let's get rid of the bureaucracy that keeps us from rolling out great and worthwhile projects all across Navajo." So when our leaders say that, right, to me, because I've seen a growth fund, an effective one. I used to work in one, I used to be an accountant in the growth fund here. Our neighbors, our brothers and sisters up in Ignacio, the Southern Uke Growth Fund. A real short time, they became the equivalent of a three billion dollar company just because they separated the business decisions from the central government. And so that model works, it's tried and it's proven. And so, you know, when our leaders here on Navajo say, you know, we need a one-stop shop, well, to me, that means growth fund. And so we're working on a plan with the original founders to fashion one for Navajo. And I pray, oh, I pray and I'm praying, and I need to bring all of our Twenty-Fourth Navajo Nation Council delegates to in on this. So one by one, we'll meet, continue to meet with these, you know, you know, hopefully garner their support. Because again, when, when people say, you know, one-stop shop, let's streamline, let's cut the red tape and bureaucracy. To me, that means growth fund. It's like business development on steroids, right? For tribal government. And then when you have the ears of, you know, the President of the United States, who's a businessman, to me, it's just the primer has been pumped, the stage has been set. The environment has been quickened to what could be. I believe new precedent will be being set here real soon for Indian country. And much more for Navajo. We have three hundred fifty thousand people. A lot of them, I'll bet, want to come home because of this pandemic, because who's to say a future pandemic? And all the hardships that it's brought. Family far away from home, wanting to come home but can't because, well, the nation's shut down. Right? Let's keep our elders safe, our most vulnerable safe. Let's, you know, close the nation down. And I get it, there is a time for that, to cut surgeon and the spiking that we've seen and have seen. So being that, that as it may, you know, we have this great knowledge now, eight months into this pandemic. You know, how to control and mitigate its spread and how to fight it. You know, who's to say there will be a vaccine real soon or maybe it's many years away and effective one? We don't know that. But we can do as many of us have done, right? I mean, there's have, have been, you know, the number of cases that we have. And, you know, so not all of us, you know, there's a hundred and eighty, almost two hundred thousand here on Navajo. Some, not everybody's gotten the virus. And it's just like a typical flu season, right? Some of you have gotten the flu and we dread it. But did we ever take the measures we took now for fighting COVID-19 in the past? Did we ever take these measures to this extreme? I don't think so. We've always, always seen people across the oceans, you know, wearing masks and such. And we thought that was pretty strange. But low and behold, here we are. Wearing masks, trying to keep safe. And, you know, I think it is the best expression of love for our fellow neighbors, our brothers and sisters to wear a mask in public places. And, you know, you like BP. I know I've received a lot of ridicule on masks and such, or the lack of it. But, you know, the truth of the matter is, as I explained yesterday to the opening session, that I wear two masks in public. You know, some of you do too. And it's just a matter of feeling, you know, confident and not making decisions based on fear. False evidence appearing real. So you learn to flow in that and you'll, you'll understand. You know, until then, we do request all of our citizens to wear masks. And if you're going to shop, then there's laws and protocol in place. Wear your mask, social distancing, right? Stay here locally. And that, that, we want to keep and open up our nonessential businesses, those that are prayerfully, I hope, still solid. Prayerfully, I hope that they still have that fortitude, they have that drive to open up businesses and maintain them and be safe, right? So we're all in this together. And so as we advocate for opening up our businesses, we need to come out strong, we need to come out prepared. And I know you are. The entrepreneurial spirit of our Navajo people are just that. They take care of the problems. They take care because they, if they don't, then that means they won't be able to put food on the table for their families. They won't be able to send their, your children to college. They won't have a lifestyle that they dream of, that they can here in America. And it's with that, that I continually will go and take any and all opportunities to go to DC and speak with our federal family and our congressional delegation. And to chime in with the White House, as we will today, about the future of our Navajo Nation and Indian country. Economic development, infrastructure, healthcare, education, opportunities, right? Keyword, opportunities. We all need opportunities. We all need a leg up, not a hand out. So prayerfully, we'll go forward. We'll move together and we'll pray and work, we'll work like it depends on us, but we'll pray like it depends on our Creator. We're all in this together. And so as I talk about that growth fund, let's, you know, continue to look at these opportunities that we have and we'll work and we need one another. So leadership will be responding here real soon. Just some updates here, Verizon is here on Navajo. They fashioned three chapters, those chapters out there, being Tuva City, Wind Rock here, and then Chinli. You guys are experiencing the joy of having satellite internet at your beck and call. And so also World Central Kitchen is pumping out thousands of food boxes as we speak. President will be handing out probably a thousand today to those four sites there. So let's keep them in prayer, protect our Creator, protect them in their traveling mercies. And so, you know, we're working on many, many water projects right now. Some have come to fruition and now as you lead a nation, you kind of lose sight unless you're getting constant updates. And I need to tell you, here at the Office of the President and Vice President, we receive constant updates. And we try to pass those along to you in these forums like this, the town halls. And continue to use our Cabinet Division Directors to be able to work these projects, bring them to fruition, spend the money, the 714 million, right? And so we don't want to leave a penny in our nation's coffers. We're bringing change and advancement to the Navajo Nation. Electricity is being delivered to many homes as we speak, one by one. As they say, inch by inch, it's a cinch. Well, one by one, people's lives are being enhanced and changed in this. Continue to pray and press forward. Businesses need to open. We get it, we understand. Let's continue to be vigilant and create an opportunity for those non-essentials to open and for our capacity to be increased. We know what to do. Let's do it. Our casinos need to open. We have a thousand employees that need to get to work or who face the great danger of closing up shop forever. What does that look like? Who's had that thought? Well, leadership, think about those things. Leadership decides on those leaderships. Leaders make the tough decisions. So let's be in prayer for that nation. So on and on, you know, let's get better at this. President and I, from the early onset of COVID pandemic, in March, we says, you know, if we have to be sequestered, if we have to isolate, let's work on ourselves, right? Let's become better readers of the Bible, let's become better prayers, let's become better husbands and wives and spouses. Let's become better children, right? Let's become better parents, let's come out of this pandemic, change for the better. We spent all this time in isolation and in solace, you know, being self-reflective. We can do the things that it will take to this nation to become a better nation for we all live in touch and interact with one another. We need to offer the best version of ourselves, if at all possible. And so I know I've gone on from rambling to preaching now, but it's only because Vice President loves the nation in which he serves, as I know the President does as well. He's out there passing out food boxes and working and driving the miles along with our many volunteers, many, many volunteers, couldn't make it work without them. And so the unseen, the people and the voices behind the scenes. God bless them. Keep them strong, keep them safe. Let them travel safely and they're coming and then they're going. And so I appreciate this time. I have J T Willie, he's all cute, he's chomping at the bit. I see him doing jumping jacks over there, he must be excited. J T Willie, I appreciate you. Thank you for your leadership over there. We look forward, as we always do, your updates. And so, ladies and gentlemen, the Executive Director for Navajo Division of Economic Development. I appreciate you, Vice President, the Second Lady, are praying for you today on our 30th wedding anniversary. Don't worry about us, we'll, we'll get out and we'll enjoy some solitude and some smores and some grape juice later. Love you guys, praying for you. And let's hear an update from J T Willie. J T Willie, take it away.
Good morning, Vice President, and a very wonderful 30th, happy anniversary to yourself and to the Second Lady, Shemamis Dot Elizer. This is J T Willie. I'm the Division Director for the Navajo Nation Division Economic Development. And what I'm going to be presenting today is just a brief update on what we have going on here at our offices here at the division, as well as provide some updates regards to the CARES funds for our businesses and for our artisans. Before we go any further though, I want to introduce some of the staff who are part of the initiative who are working on the CARES Act program that we have going on. So first, I'm going to have Ms. Shawna Manus introduce herself so that she can provide some updates for you all.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Shawna Manus. I am the Senior Economic Development Specialist with Business Regulatory. And right now, the Business Regulatory is working extra, extra hard. We're working on issuing business regulatory numbers to all of our businesses. So we are seeing thousands of applications coming through our office. And we are doing our due diligence to make sure that all of the businesses are registered and complying with all of the tax rules and any other clearances that we need to do. So it's taken time, but we are working very hard to get everyone situated and issued a number, which will then allow all businesses to go on to Part Two, to apply for the CARES Act. But right now, again, we have a staff of five in our office and we're taking calls, we're working very hard. So we appreciate everyone's patience because it is a very overwhelming situation at the moment, but we're catching up. So thank you, everyone, for your support and working with us to get through the Business Regulatory portion of the application. Thank you.
Great, thank you Shawna. So as Shawna mentioned, there's a process that we're going through with the application. Part one being that you have to register with Shawna's Department, the Business Regulatory. And then part two is the actual application for the CARES funds. When we receive the applications from individuals, they're printed up and they go through a review process. After that process is reviewed, you get issued a business number, which you will use for the application when it comes time to apply for CARES funds. I just want to take you into the environment that we have set up in regards to this program that has been working since September 9th. And then the process that we're going through, as well as provide you some updates with the current CARES funds. So let me bring you in here. This is the Division Conference Room. And in working with the conference room, we designed it to become an environment for processing all the incoming applications, for CIBs, for business registration, for all necessary areas to provide customer service for the CARES Act Initiative for businesses and for artisans. But just to provide you some updates. We are currently, I have an update as of October 16th. The CARES Act Fund has funded over 2,447 applicants. And the funded and extended offer has happened for 1,090 of those applicants of the total applicants that we have currently sitting in the pool. Now, that 1,090 applicants has been an award amount of about $7.6 million. And that amount there is divided up between our artisans. Our artisans outnumber our businesses at this time due to the process that they have to go through. Of course, it's no, comes to no surprise to us that our artisans are at the higher bracket because right now they're at 879 artists have been awarded in the amount of about $4.2 million. And our businesses have been awarded in the amount of 211 businesses at around $3.3 million. We have pending applications right now in the queue. So what that means is pending, we have 1,357 applications pending. So what that means is they're still going through an assessment review. They are still being requested additional information if they need additional information. And they're also being asked for more documentation regards to application. So once we clear all of those up in the next coming weeks, we're going to clear those up. And those are valued at about $13.8 million. Of course, with this process, we're seeing the following identification of the applications. So of that approved amount up there for that 1,090, we divided it by agency locations. What you see here is our Eastern Agency has about 145 applications that have come in. Of those applications, 113 are artists and 32 are businesses. Our Ford Defiance Agency is at 201 with 158 artists and 43 businesses. Our Central Agency has about 117 applications. Of those 117, 99 are artists and 18 are business. Our Western Agency has about 171, 134 of those are artists and 37 are business. Northern Agency has 109 with 83 artists and 26 businesses. Our reservation applicants have to, are at this point, the highest number of applications that we have seen. And that is looking at 347. Of those 347, 284 are artists and 63 businesses. One reason being is that the access to internet, the access to technology, the access to the broadband wifi is one of our reasons why that application list is a lot higher. Of course, here, we have teams set up throughout the whole Navajo Nation at our regional offices to offer assistance to many of our businesses and many of our artisans. So as we move forward, I want to go through some amendments that I'll be going through for approval when I come to the Navajo Nation Council. Now, what we have here is that we want to be able to offer amendments to the expenditure program so that we're able to get assistance out to our artisans and to our businesses. As we can go back here on the document so that we can show what I wanted to do is that our, our entire expenditure program has been allotted for assistance to all of our regional offices. And what you can see here is that what we want to do moving forward is that we need to get some more funds out. So in order to give more funds out, we need to ensure that we're able to get assistance to many of those individuals that require additional funding. And then so what we plan to do is to remove the ceiling limit that has been identified. And that ceiling limit is at $60,000. And then after that point, we want to be able to get more assistance out to some of our businesses and some of our other small businesses throughout the Navajo Nation that need additional funding when it comes to the expenditure program. Moving, let's move up just a little bit here. This is the team that we have identified for the program. Our program has been split up between a Part One team and a Part Two team. And of course, we have our regional team who is now in place at all of our regional offices. We have assistance taking place in Chinli, Eastern Navajo, Western Navajo. We even got some assistance out in Aneth and at our Shiprock location. Each one of the team members here have been working hand in hand to provide technical support for the program to get applicants through the process for Part One and Part Two. So as we move forward here, we're looking to get some more funds out in the process. And then additionally, be able to provide more support to our businesses and to our artisans. To bring assistance to all of the necessary areas on the Navajo Nation is what we're looking to do here with our expenditure program. The team that has been set forth here has been offering onsite assistance to all of our communities on the Navajo Nation, as well as bringing forth additional support necessary for us to get assistance out there. There's only so much capacity that we can meet and we're looking to get more support out there. So we're really looking to all of you out there to assist your relatives and your family members in the application process. From there, on our side, as you can see here with all the work taking place, it takes a little bit of time to get applications processed, to review all of the documents received and to get numbers issued. And then on the backside, the application for the CARES funds. There's $60 million that has been allotted for this fund. We're looking to see forth the allotment of those funds as we move forward. There will be an extension of the deadline, which was set for next week on the 30th. On that deadline will be pushed back to get more assistance out, as well as also meeting the needs for some of our businesses and also our enterprises here on Navajo. We understand that there are some situations where many of you were not able to get assistance from the SBA's PPP or EIDL program. And so it is in our intentions to expedite these funds with amendments that have been proposed to our leadership on our program here moving forward. We did a first run of assistance up to this point. And then as we can see, it passed the 30th date of next week, will be another run of assistance that will be going out to get more support out. The limit is $60,000, but when we lift that limit, we'll be able to meet additional needs so that we, you all as business owners can continue to meet your payroll demands because of the closure of the Navajo Nation, because, because of the extended public health orders have been put in place, the limited access to services that we have all been encountering through this time. So be patient with us in the process. We'll have some more updates as we move forward. And we look to our leadership to guide us through that process. So I'll be turning this time over to our next presenter. Thank you very much from the Division of Economic Development and the team that we have in place who are overseeing the CARES Expenditure Program.
Ako alchuneha ni o deh alchun. Jo eh chahsin tsogoh eh ab anhila je eh i xi gehesidoh alchun. Jo eh ah ko deh ah oh yugo ben na ntnin. Na ntnin oh yu ben hebehe deneh je o tedi alchunen leni. Eh beni na shalchuneh. Alchuneh do etchi jillida. Do ah na nleti bayajjiltiada do do nache ochu jillida. Edi jetnilon njuneh alchuneh. Chale eh eh nasen nacha na ho ah do nasen nacha ateh dole. Chahsin tsogoh konstchu idolsani ama ajeh ba alchuneh yetodatilzen. Nasen ho njuno na ra dole, bi yisidona ra dole. Konam nishi ateh i chiosteh do njuno ultcha i la dole. Allaho ehosen dole. Datano ho nachatodatilzen eh stchu idolsani. Ah do ah dilaa ot ah nachatodatilzen eh do eh eh. Ah do chahsin tsogodi ho wadabaneitani ama do ajehni tlini. Anale etche daden tlini. Ho wadabaneitani kodoh nacha alchunen leni nihi cokem hi naleke. Ah ateh cha tan hisi. Shoh hota go ah alila, hota go la yeti la. Datano ah do hota yetalchi ona be eh ona dat eh ina. Moral how to manage your feelings. Jo itne belagana ek eh jo. Chahsin iteha yetjilti i shoh shida hota shamanaha lo hota. Ah shaje sheta hota yeti la. Danozi. Ah konle ultcha dana ha cha alchuneh cha datana hota. Beni na alchuneh hota bayajjilti i shisha ultcha. Oko cha ultcha eh chuneh ada yahanacha. Shogadaku hota shama shaje chui di ni shaje. Shama chui lempa datano oh chon dataneh na alchuneh. Nihi chahsin doh eti eh ho wadana ha chan doh ochu hota datamiza. Etah cela datahi ra zelida talahi ra alchuneh. Nihi chta ye le. Eh ina di alchuneh oleni chajo ona ntnin. Di dikhusna ntnihie eh hota i iteh. Hotabe etah ochu liyanta bedekno hota eh elatcha nakisa bedeh lon. Hota eh ho wana hasa. Ah jo ah do oyoh o deh ino htni nacha alchuneh. Do allhat eh weh dole, allhat alchun dole. Di ilkina eh laha ot eh. Shoshab natche hota ha chahsin la yugo i xiye doh. Ado ledu datanashku ho. Ah oh adah adah um picker ato dahni go. Etanam ye tandakshana liyada shetni lend eh. Ako qad eh doh ochu bedi ni ah babe ban kitija ah. Ta na chiu eh weh il ille. Ako eh bena ntnin shik eh doh shidneh. Ako di dikhusna ntnihie doh ti iteh da. Ako nle go danhilinta dajachriyan da be ni iltsa ah ho wadana hasdha. Beni na ah konsonant eh ninel le la yugo dilchi oh yu la yugo bedilniho. Ah neh dat dikhusda. Belni ilgualta whetni den jo eh dechijoo bena ntnin. Chahsin tsogodi nacha alchunetschadat da beta chedot dat konle teti tsadat. Dat eh qad. Chahsin eh la eh ambor dan hilniya. Ha eh eh ol ye ambor. Eh shi doh cha niida. Ii yapahat zetna bor le eh. Ah kon kon konan na ah jo ye oh yu na nishda eh. Shetsha da ah jo shetsha bedsha da chin ye etni eh eten. So da ah lai hota ochu shidneh ah do na hatan tskisende. Qad eh doh o deh itida. Nacha nihi le tshaan deh otah dat has. Oh ah jo godat um bedshetan tahu yult na. Na klo shi doh oh yugo bahanne ah ot eh. Le tshaan etan masu ta. Ah altschungo oh yu bahanne. Ii qadnata dih kaas ra jo qadizel. Ah dat na ayult. Cha ala etiset eh sheteh shon tskil yult. Cha. Ochu di ah jo intahu ya ah ani. Ah datanana tzaghush na la otadat es khalo. Ako la eh di nacha alchunen leni gaila bahlbandi. Chala. Ko eh um ah la etnan doch. Um ah do etez da, ah do deyogit da hota bat datjiit. Oh ah do ah jo na ntnini oh ana ha yu tsah datan eh. Ako. Eh xi ochu yu yu yugo be. Be najno tcha na halendeh beni na alchuneh. Beni ku do ba hasi eh be eh chon chan hisi. Oh ochu ni yu chahsin ni kla eh nacha alchuneh hilahetan dati na. And I'm telling you this because your child will keep you accountable. Ah jo godat tsah njuno bahlkon neh um njuno ye indedol tchat nacha alchunje. Shoh eh shama ah konsonant indedol nihlo be eh hasa dole. Kodoh alchunana datineh ah ho ah neh kizna ganchni. Dedol nihlo kizney deno ni. Ah jo godat tsah bedshi yeteh etchi otan hissah dole nsunona kodoh. Alchuneh nohni. Nihi ah nti desne. Halan neh shalchuneh. Ah she ani ultcha i bohososa mteh. Ah do ba ultcha i shi ilta bohososa. Ah do chahsin noh la eh chohl nkitilnihi tapo hososa. Chohl nanltsani da, chohl itchaleida. Etchon neh elia. Ochun deh oh anzaja eteh shalchuneh. Temporary ltni. But that does not mean that you don't do practice. Continue your practicing, doing your conditioning skills. You're missing basketball, we're missing volleyball. All that. You're missing your friends, you might say you're bored. But there's nothing boring. You're gonna get creative, my children. Ah jo godat ah doh le. There are so many kodoi nihi na tani ye yalti opportunities ltni. Eh opportunities ltnini ki nihi beha nosen. If you have parents, you have aunties, you have uncles. That are not abiding by our curfews. Maybe it's time that you as children step up and say, hey. We need to really take care of ourselves, mom, dad. I don't want you to to live a longer life. These are some of the things that we need to do together. Stop traveling, we have enough food. We can do this. And I'm saying this now, maybe it's time that we attract some of our children. Ah ani chahsin tsogoh. Amado ajeh etche enale koato datan hi etni deh toh da iseni tsada. Nacha alchuneh shi deh iseti. So I'm asking for the children, the young ones, the teenagers, the youth to help. Let's stop the spread. Let's practice our social distancing. Let's avoid get togethers. There's so much you can do at home. And if you, you know, there's just so much. Ako eh kodoh ah won shehende beni chahana hasidole. Ah do ama do ajeh nohni gi. Avoid physical punishment ashon deh. Eh eh doh bededol ltni da oh yu bedshet nohtah weh eh weh. Hayaje. Shoh shiyaje shahweh di ko eh doh 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 juni da doh oh oh ilta. Nasen ba hashti. Ah doh ani na hashti ho dole la, ah doh ani na esan ho dole la. Ah neh etah anta ah neh neh ina ho lonnjune bedjuno doh ah doh eteh da. Ah doh nihi za ye go bena ntnin. Ah doh ba achon na zin shi le kon tatakaha. Oh yu qad na ho enta altahitata es khal. Ako na ho eh chagrah qaden na ho eh chagrah ko eh tatel khalo. Ah doh ahachshingui hilwa. Eh doh ah doh otah teneh. Chukad nihi bedahozin oh yugo otahanda ilkhal. Eh doh be ba ba achon liyano bena ah hin ntnin shik eh doh shidneh. Kon tsogoh shen hi chahana hasidole. Ah doh ana kiskan shen kodoh chahsin tsogoda hi chahana ishkeh. Ako huhana eteh dole shik eh doh shi ye go otah datan liyano iki denosen. Eh yo da ah hin o htni. Kon tsogoh na hasidole. Bedo shen Dr. Jim nihi chahana hasidole. Shah.
Thank you, Dr. Fowler, um for all those comments and. Eh 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 nan qadih mina ntnin um ah konson eh 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 nan heditni doh. Don na tani president Nez do, vice president Lizer do. Um Day T Willie do qadih eh eh um dih binan hi chen. Atah hadaiso zegi qad ni ondo daishonosanji qad eh eh nan heditni go nan. Qadih ishnayani gi shai Dr. Jill Jim insheh do executive director. Um after Navajo Department of Health eh eh isbahehendeqabi edinzi doh qadih. Um ishnayani qadih eh fata um prevention messages deh qad deh hanasso. Qadih shi qadih um PowerPoint and other slito. Belagana ek eti shi deh ai ji eti so qadih hat um behat eshit doh. Um. Qadih eh nan heditni doh so shesho. So I just wanted everyone, thank you for those that are listening this afternoon, um that are here. Wanted to thank President Nez, Vice President Lizer. And also Dr. Fowler and Day T for all your comments and continued effort in. Um preventing and discussing um COVID nineteen. The preventive messages that we always talk about here from the Department of Health and the Health Command Operations Center. Is continuing to wear your mask, um wearing your mask properly is very important. Um there are very various, um I guess. Uh recommendations on wearing your mask. Make sure that you have it fully covering your nose and your mouth. Right, there are people that don't wear it right and they might wear it like this, they might wear it like this. But making sure that you wear your mask correctly is always a good recommendation and I think. Sometimes um you might have a double layered mask um when you're out there around. In the public which is just fine so um and having the disposable one is okay. As well, so there are different ways to um suggest different um mask. I know there are some that CDC has done that though are not really effective. But I think the regular um disposable mask and a cloth mask is definitely sufficient enough. Continue to maintain six feet distancing indoors and outdoors and also wearing your mask indoors as well. Washing your hands um with soap and water for twenty seconds and disinfecting um in high touch surface areas. And those are just reminders, um high touch surface areas can exist in your own vehicle, your home and. At work, there are several common areas that. Um could be cleaned on a normal basis like your keyboards or phones or doorknobs, um steering wheel, um shopping carts. Those are just some items um that you can make sure you clean. If you go to the ATM as well, there's um the ATM machine buttons, make sure you wear a glove. Um when you do that or either when you go to the gas pump, use a disposable glove and so. Eh as a quick reminder, we always like to encourage individuals to think twice before they leave the Navajo Nation. Think twice meaning that are you putting yourself or others at risk at home? Um are the individuals that you will be traveling with? Um how much of it is it um that we are trying to protect our in our elders and those that are. Um with underlying health conditions and those are individuals with diabetes, hyp lip pressure. Are some individuals that we know are very receptive to um COVID nineteen. So we want to ensure that you look at these questions and think about it um as you begin to think about your travel. Some travel recommendations that we've done before is to. Have one person go to the grocery store and shop rather than having multiple people shop as well so. Those are um continued recommendations to reduce the risk of exposure for individuals so. And and when you do travel, um if you do go to a hotspot that you. Might knowingly know about or not knowingly know about but. When you do come home, are you prepared to quarantine for fourteen days after your trip? And also um are you prepared for the risk and then. Sometimes we look at the preparation for risk meaning that. Um taking care of a an individual that might be at risk for COVID and when you come home are you. Willing to make sure there's enough food for individuals or either. Ability to make sure you have an emergency plan in case someone does touch positive so. Always continue to look at your risk when you go off the Navajo Nation and also understand. Um the exposure, if you are exposed to COVID nineteen and these are individuals. Um that are listening, if you're either at work or either at home. Or either um at some sort of food establishment, at school or anywhere. Um you might want to consider. These questions very carefully to be around others. Either if you have COVID or not, if you are sick, you should not be um coming to work. Um we are still hearing of cases in that manner if people are still sick and um coming to work, that should not be the case so. Please continue to make sure that you um do not come to work. But if you think you had COVID and you um test a positive, wait at least ten days since symptoms first appeared. Either you have a fever or a cough or body aches, might have occurred. And you um have monitored um yourself for that long. Um a journal is a good idea if you think you've been exposed, if you're under quarantine or isolation. And then keep in track of the medications you've taken, how often. So when you're at home and you are experiencing a fever or um body aches and headaches. Um put down the time of the last time you took that medication on your journal. And then you will monitor this every single day going forward and also documenting if symptoms have improved. So by the tenth day of your last first symptom or medication, you. You're okay to be around individuals. I don't see any new CDC guidelines regarding um any changes to this yet. And then if you are asymptomatic, meaning you did test positive and you have no symptoms. And that means that you can be around others ten days since your last test. And that you continue to have no symptoms. So the this is all related to recognizing and getting information if you have been exposed. So for anyone wondering if there are close contact or not. Um so to quarantine, um you have to be within fifteen minutes or more. Near that, near an individual that had um is a confirmed case. And that they are um that you are six feet or less within that timeframe as well so. Those are just some quick guidelines on identifying yourself as a clo- close contact in order to be recommended for quarantine. Another um item that we always like to cover is just avoiding large gatherings in general. Uh if you want to gather, I mean there is a limit in gatherings right now regarding. Um five persons or less and it's and you can do that safely outside. Um with their own family, um it's not like a full gathering where you have. Twenty, thirty, forty people and then they're all from mo- multiple households. Um that is not recommended, there are drive-in gatherings that are permitted during non-curfew hours. And so just recognize there are options for individuals but to do them safely. What we're hearing about are family gatherings that are causing these clusters in across the Navajo Nation. So as such as celebrating birthday parties, um traditional um gatherings. Those are all things um that need to be avoided and can be done without a large gathering. And without um a number of people because the more people that you bring into a gathering. For a longer duration of time and the. And also if you are not taking any preventive measures as wearing a mask and sharing food. Um you increase your risk for COVID nineteen. Because this disease is very invincible in that way. You um it is transmitted by droplets, by sneezing, by someone not. I might have um covered their mouth and they're sick and they decide to not wash their hand. They s- then decide to go shake everyone else's hand at the party. I mean, these are just things that can happen with just the regular flu and I that really lends itself to the name. Um in Navajo which is dekushntagi nasteh tada. And as you recall, when we were um trying to figure out a name, a really simple and common name that people can understand. In the Navajo language, we looked at what similar symptoms that we. As Navajo people understand and and that was the big cough um of nineteen meaning that. This was first um identified in twenty nineteen so. Just remember that um. These preventive measures are all that is very necessary in order to stop any sort of transmission. And some things that we have not talked about avoiding large gatherings is asking your own family members. Um and also taking other precautions that you do at work can be done at home. And asking people where their uh what their exposure is to other people with COVID nineteen. But the only thing you can do is protect yourself and your family. And by doing these recommendations, um you will be a lot um less. Putting yourself at risk for COVID nineteen. Continue to protect yourself and others at workplaces, I mentioned, as we're starting to hear of more workplace exposures as well. Um make sure you stay home. Um the flu is, the flu does exist. Um in New Mexico, there was a first known case and also. Um the season for um flu season is is starting to begin. So just know that all these preventive measures that we have been talking about. For COVID nineteen is the same for preventing regular flu. And that means staying home and monitoring your health. Um wearing a mask in a workplace setting is very important. Here at the Command Center and other and also in Department of Health, we all wear masks um on a very daily basis. And it has, it has been a routine for several months now. And also practice social distancing and search spaces as well, even though. People might have been used to standing next to you or talking to you. I mean, people will get used to talking to you from across the room or sitting. Six feet away from you to talk to you and that's fine. And also um wearing additional protection as well. Um I know there are face seals that can help protect if there are any plexiglass and other ways this can be done. Washing your hands and soap often is always recommended. And I hope that um due to allergies or other reasons that no one is at work covering for cough and sneezes. Avoiding sharing objects and equipment, cleaning, um disin- disinfect frequently touched surfaces. And then keeping a hand sanitizer on hand if there's avail- if if it's available. And avoiding visitors at the workplace and so only. Um invite others to come for very important face-to-face um gatherings and that can be. Uh finding a room or a location where you can practice social distancing if you need to talk to a visitor. Also disinfecting their surface area afterwards and also this can be at home. Um avoiding visitors at home is another thing that we have talked about before too, um having the no visitor sign. And delivering things at the front door, always common things that we talk about. So as a reminder, Halloween is at the end of the month and we just want to encourage other opportunities um for individuals to celebrate Halloween. As do a virtual contest, um participate in a community virtual contest. Zoom parties, game night, scary movie night, spooky pictures. In-home trick-or-treating, spooky cook-off, um dinner theater, scavenger hunt house, Halloween karaoke. Halloween piñata or just other ideas, some ideas that can keep individuals at home so you don't really have to trick or treat and enjoy. Um celebrating Halloween with your kids at home. And also um family there as well to still acknowledge that we are still living in a pandemic and. The world has changed and things are not normal anymore and I think we just have to. Um accept that and find ways to still um do the things we can so we can keep our mental health um healthy as well. Our mental health and well being is very important in this COVID pandemic. Um some people call it COVID fatigue but I think that we all have the ability to. Find ways to comfort each other and our and our family and find and. Find new traditions or other things that we can do to connect with our family even though. Um you might not seen, you might have not seen a relative for a number of months but give them a call every day. Use other means and do virtual um meetings or FaceTime with your family more often. Um it's not the same as seeing someone in person to see if they're okay but just seeing their face or just hearing their voice I think. Is always one way to um stay connected and. Sometimes we don't want to stress out on COVID and what we're living in but. I think it's okay to talk about it, talk about it, talk about your frustrations with someone you trust or a family member but. We also do have a mental health line. Um you can get referred to if you have questions and um that number I don't have on this screen but. If you want to get access to a mental health line, it's nine two eight eight seven one seven zero one four. And also if you are a family member and need a place to isolate as well. Um the Tinley Community Center is available for people that need to isolate. It's, I hope it's not only open to the Navajo Nation people that are um. On the Navajo Nation that get a test and that and they need to isolate. Other things that we have found in some of our clusters. Are people that are coming back from the city and they're wanting to isolate on the Navajo Nation, coming back to their home to isolate and. And we don't want that, especially if you're going to expose other individuals if you can't safely isolate. And you're coming back to the Navajo Nation. Know that there are options for you to isolate safely so you can protect your family. And protect yourself and you can call the nine two eight eight seven one. Seven zero one four if you need isolation, if you've tested positive. And and also tell other other people in the community, your neighbors. And we do have several areas that have hotspots right now. So in those areas, in Eastern Agency, in Northern Agency. And Central Agency, um if you're listening from those agencies and you know. Someone and as either a community member or either a family member that is positive and does cannot. Isolate safely at home. Um due to either there is limited rooms or inability to have a caretaker. Um we have the Tinley Community Center where they can be referred to and transported to. And if they don't have a ride, we can make arrangements for them to be transferred to the community center where they can be monitored. Um by health professionals until they safely recover and then they can be transported home. So know that those options do exist for the um our relatives here on the Navajo Nation so please um. We 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 need to ensure that our people can safely isolate. And if you have questions again, nine two eight eight seven one seven zero. One four and I just also want to thank everyone that are listening on this call and. I appreciate um all your resilience and your daily commitment to practicing safe measures. It really is up to us. Um taahhutetegoh shahha niha so. Um really up to us to protect ourselves, our family, our community members and the whole Navajo Nation. And especially our elders so stay strong, save lives and continue to mask up so eh eh nan. Ek eh doh shidneh.